12:32, President Chris Perry, Andy Park, Susan Shuffelbein, and Kelly Bethel Smith. And we are joined today by Brian Jordan from KASB to talk about launching a superintendent search. Thanks for being with us today, Mr. Jordan.
You bet. Happy to help out. So what I'm going to do is kind of go through what our process looks like. And then I have a tentative timeline that I've put together. And I had sent those some resources to Mr. Dorothy, and I hope he forwarded some of those things on to you all. So that's a tentative timeline that we can take a look at and make some adjustments. I'm going to approach this that you're interested in using us or want to use us to do your search. But if you don't use us, that's you need to use somebody because you need somebody to do the background work and all the HR work that goes along with making sure that the candidates that you are interviewing and possibly hiring are the people that they appear to be on paper. So I'm going to kick off and just talk a little bit about our service, and I'm going to pull up one of the-
Sorry for interrupting. Thank you. I'm so sorry. We forgot to approve the agenda. I just jumped right in. Sorry. Thanks, Chris. Is there a motion for approval for the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda.
Second. All right. Chris moved. Susan seconded. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Agenda approved 4-0. Thank you for reminding me, Chris. Brian, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
I'm going to pull up a page out of that resource book that I had sent over previously and just kind of walk through the steps of that, kind of talk about what we see districts frequently do with each of those steps and how we support districts through that process. So obviously, this is kind of the first step in the search. We come in and we work with the board to establish a timeline that's connected with where you want to go and the timetable that you want to go. I did visit with Mr. Dorothy, and he indicated that you guys were interested in trying to possibly have the search complete before the new board takes their seat in January. So the timeline that we're going to take a look at here in just a minute or a few minutes, we'll look at that and talk about pros and cons and make any adjustments that you see fit. So once you agree to do the search, there's a contract that you enter into with us. Our contract does have a guarantee with it that if you hire your superintendent using our process, and there's some things in there that outline what our process is, we guarantee that superintendent placement for a year. So if in that first year, when that person's with you, for whatever reason, that person leaves, whether you fire them or they jump and go to another district, we'll come back and do the search at no cost to the district except for our mileage to travel to and from. So we really emphasize and really want to spend a lot of time working with the board to find a good fit. And when I say find a good fit, that means we're going to bring you candidates and we're going to try to highlight, point out those things that they have in their experience that connect with what you're looking for. And that's how we feel very confident in helping you find that right fit. So once we get the contract signed, then we start the process of marketing. And the marketing for us is we put it out on various websites, ours being one of those. We also put it on the USA United School Administrator Job Board. We put it on Kansas Teaching Jobs. We also have an affiliation with the National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, which is basically, it's a really fancy way of saying the 40 other school board associations across the nation. We cross-post positions. So if you go out and look on our website at vacancies, it'll take you to a page that has Kansas vacancies, and then you'll see other states listed. These other states do the same thing with our searches. And so that's how we try to get a broad exposure, not just in Kansas. We also use social media to highlight openings as they come up, and we try to push those things out on a pretty regular basis so folks know what's open out there. So after we obviously spin up the posting, we're going to be working with you in your district, whoever you point us towards. A lot of times, it's your clerk, or we've actually worked with some high school marketing or communication classes before to develop some marketing materials. We have a staff here that we kind of have a structure that we use, but we need your thoughts, your pictures, your things to drop into that structure, and we help you build that process. And then we use that in our postings and marketing for that position. The next thing that comes along, and I'm kind of down here on step number five, is we do what we call characteristic forms in your community. And that's just another way of saying focus groups in your community. So we come out and we meet with groups within your community and ask them four simple questions. What are the leadership and personal qualities that you think a leader needs to have to be successful in Baldwin City? What are the strengths of this community in this school district? What are the challenges or critical issues? And then the fourth question is what's the most important leadership or personal quality this person has to possess? We do that with focus groups, gather that information. We come and meet with the board and walk you through a very similar process and then get you as a board to agree upon what the top priorities are. So we do the focus groups onsite, but then we also use an online survey that asks the same questions that we encourage you to push out through any channel that you can to your broader community to try to gather that same information. So district, your size, it's not uncommon for us to get 500 responses on an online survey plus the focus group. So you have a pretty good understanding of what your community values as you try to secure that next superintendent. So we walk the board through prioritizing those things, which does two things. It helps the board come to agreement on what's important, but it also then is the starting point for your building of the interview framework. And so we also work with you to ensure that you're putting together an interview process that's legal, it's transparent, it's fair for the people that are involved with that. And we also do some training with you to ensure that you're not breaking any laws or bringing anything into the interview that could potentially reflect poorly on you as a board as you interview that person. So those are kind of the steps that we work through leading up to the actual interviews. We work with you then to develop an interview schedule. We have examples. We have a resource book that when we officially get started in this process, I'll come meet with the board, and we will sit down and go through that resource book, answer any questions that you have. It's got a lot of examples of how to build the day for the interview. We will help you design that day. And typically, on the interview day, you'll see the board interviewing one candidate per day. The candidate's going to come, spend most of the day probably in your community, take a tour of your schools, take a tour of your community, and then they will meet with the board that evening and go through that process. The board decides who they want to interview, how many people they want to interview, and who they want to hire. We don't set in on the interviews. We don't try to convince you to hire one person or another person. We simply bring you the candidates. We screen the candidates for their backgrounds to ensure that they can work in Kansas, for one thing. They don't have anything on a national record or a list that's out there. And then we also research the candidates to find out what have they done in their past experiences that connect with what you need. And so we come to the district, we'll meet, we'll go through all the candidates that have applied for the job, and then you will ultimately decide who gets granted one of those interviews that I was just describing. Our role in that process is to find out as much as we possibly can. I like to tell boards, we call it the good, the bad, the ugly. So we're going to tell you everything we know and try to really try to figure out, do they have those characteristics and qualities that the board has prioritized as seeking or wanting in their next superintendent? After you go through the interview process, then you're into the negotiations with the candidate. Some things that we do to help with that process, and I'm kind of down here on step seven now, is we do a salary study of what comparable districts are paying for their superintendents. You will know what each candidate is currently making from a salary and benefits standpoint. They disclose that on their application. And so we can help guide the board around what's a competitive salary that we can offer. We don't get involved with the negotiation side of that. We leave that to the board president or the designate from the board to do the negotiating. But we do have attorneys, as you all are fully aware, that can help with the development of the contract. We have contract templates that you can use if you want to adjust your contract or change your contract that you're currently using. So we're really just there as kind of an on-the-call person to help you with any question or step at that point as you go through the negotiation process. And then kind of the final step after you've hired your superintendent is we come back and we do what we call the onboarding training with the board and the new superintendent once they're in the district in the position. So typically, that happens in July or August. We'll come back and we'll try to get the board on the same page with the superintendent as far as goals and priorities in that first 18 months to 24 months. And then also walk through, we have a series of questions and discussion points around those common things that come up between a board and the superintendent relationship. And so we walk through and try to make sure that everybody's really on the same page and starting off in a good working relationship. And that's kind of the last step that we have with the board in the search process, and that's included in our process of the search. So I just kind of quickly ran through there. What questions come up as I go through those steps for you all? None?
Well, I have one, as usual. I usually do. On the online survey, who's the target audience for that?
It's as broad as you can get it. So, you know, it gets sent out to whomever you want. It's open to the public. So on the survey, they disclose, how do you best describe your connection to the school district, a parent, a student, a business owner, or a patron in the community? And then what's your length of time with a connection to the school district? So zero to five years, five to 10. So you kind of have a sense of who actually took our survey. So, you know, we encourage you to put it out there wherever you can put it, just to get voices involved with that.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions?
What do we need to do to get started? Do we need to... What's required as far... Do we have to have a vote?
Oh, yeah. That's a good question. So I sent a contract over with Mr. Dorothy. You just have to ratify that contract. Honestly, it's not a huge deal for us to get started, and then you can ratify the contract at a later date if you want that. I have a timeline here that I can throw up, and we can look at that and talk about pros and cons of the dates that are proposed there. The dates that I put in this timeline, let me throw that up here just a second. These are available dates that I have, but if these dates don't work for you all, we can make some adjustments and we can see, you know, I'm the point person for your search. I'll be the one that meets with you all through the process with the board. But if there's an absolute date that you have to have that doesn't work with my schedule, we have a team of people that maybe could come and do one step of the process. But I'll be the one that you're working with directly in the board meetings and working through that process. So this is the timeline that I put together just based on the quick conversation that I had with Mr. Dorothy about you guys were wishing to have this process complete before the new board comes on. So this has the search kicking off really here on Monday next week. And then between, really, I had this set up for Monday night meeting, but between now and then, we would really work on getting those marketing materials spun up and put up on the posting that goes out. We can easily get the posting up within a 24-hour turnaround. That's quick. The marketing takes a few days to get that put together. We do, like I said, we do have a standard kind of structure that we use, talks about, you know, some of the budgetary things. We want you to highlight some of the programs or things that you focused on in recent years. If you have pictures of facilities, we put those in that as well. So that's really what's happening here. The online survey, that too, we can spin that up here easily within a 24-hour window. And then the characteristic committees, these are three options that I had available where I would come to your community, meet with focus groups, and we would go through those four questions. And I'd spend the whole day in the community and then meet with you all in the evening, late afternoon, evening, and we go through everything that we've learned from that online survey and through those focus groups. And so those are three options that I put out there. I have completed applications are due to KASB on December 9th. That just means we closed the online application window. We use an online portal that applicants go and fill out the application. They submit their resume, their credentials, their license, all of that information. You'll get all of that in a profile for each candidate when we come and meet with the board. We have to have a couple of clear business days in between the closing and when I meet with you to go through the candidates, just because we use a third party to do some of the federal checks on background checks and those lists that are out there. So that's why there's a few days between the 9th and the 13th. Then on the evening of the 13th, or we could do it over a lunch meeting, it just depends on when you want to meet, we would go through those candidates. That typically takes us about an hour to go through that process with you. And what we do is we go through each candidate, and then we talk in as much detail as we can find out on each of those candidates about how they fit with those criteria that you established back there on the characteristics committee meeting. I'm pointing at my screen like you can see what I'm pointing at. Sorry about that. And then what I have set up here is just a window of time for you to conduct your interviews. And as I said earlier, the interviews typically, you'll do one per day. We really discourage boards from trying to cram multiple interviews into a day just because it's pretty taxing to set in a two-hour interview and to try to stack those on top of each other. By the time you get through a couple of those, you're not really tuned in to the people that are sitting there in front of you. And so it's very difficult to give your full attention if you're doing multiple interviews in a given day. So that has you wrapping up the interviews kind of right there that week before the Christmas holiday. And so again, this is built on what Mr. Dorothy had said you guys were seeking to try to get done before the new board would come on.
I have to interject. I'm sorry. You know, there, I just, it's not really because we're trying to get this done before the new board comes on, or at least that wasn't the board's discussion. So I do want to just point that out.
Okay.
We're at the end of an accreditation process and the beginning of a new one. We're also launching a new strategic plan.
Okay.
We can't wait on everything. So it really isn't about, I really don't, I don't want to give the wrong impression that we're trying to cram this in before the new board comes on because that's, there may not be a new board, for one. And for two, it really has more to do with also, the longer that we go into the school year, based on advice we were given, you know, the less likely you're going to have the best candidates for us to choose from. And so that's, I just want to, it really isn't about getting it done before the new board comes on. It's really about hitting the hustle button so that we can get the best candidates because of all the superintendent changes that are happening throughout the state. And we want to be upfront with that. So that's just important to note as far as our intentionality about our timelines. The other thing I have a question about, when we get to the interview process, is it recommended that the same, is it the entire board that sits in on the interview process? Is it a couple of designated people? And if so, do those need to be the same people who commit to all three or four days? What's that look like?
Good questions. What we recommend and what is most commonly done is the entire board sits in on the interviews. And you need to try to have everybody there. It's very difficult to kind of weigh candidates. If three people were at this one and different three were at this one, how do you have that cross-conversation? So we recommend the entire board is there. If you have to zoom in because of work takes you away, you need to do that, but try to be at least available to hear the comments and questions if you can't be there in person. So, yeah, the whole board is involved. Now, I want to back up. That was me. I don't think Mr. Dorothy told me that it was the new board coming on. I think I just made that assumption, so I apologize for that.
Oh, no worries. No worries. I just want to make sure, because this is an ambitious timeline, for sure, and I just don't want there to be any misunderstanding about that, because it's going to take the entire community. We want everyone invested in this process so that we can get the right superintendent for the community. So I just wanted to make sure we were clear about, you know, because this is a very rushed, I mean, could appear to be a very rushed thing. If we have the entire board here, I've done this before when it came to hiring, doing principal hiring interviews, and we had designated people assigned from the board who were willing to commit to the whole process. If we have the entire board there, is that not an open meeting then?
That's a good question. It's actually an executive session because it's personnel-related, so.
Okay. Okay. That's how we get around.
You will have, let's say you interview four people, you'll have four consecutive board meetings, and the agenda simply is an executive session for interviewing superintendent candidates. What we recommend is the whole process, as we discuss candidates, is in closed session because it's personnel-related. What we recommend is once you settle on your final three or four folks that you want to interview, then you publicly, the day that they're coming to interview, announce that, hey, Susan Smith is coming to interview on December 15th. Here's a brief bio of hers, of where she's been and what she's done. That's the first time that names actually get released of who's out there that's going to be interviewed for your job. And then in your community, your staff will see those things, but the interview is all done in executive session. Your deliberations about the candidates are done in executive session, and the community finds out who you will hire when you do your public announcement and ratify that contract with that new superintendent.
Okay.
Great questions. The other question that we often get is, do we need to have another interview team set up that puts them through a series interview? Well, we tell, we really caution boards against doing that. It could create a potential conflict because you guys want candidate A and another group wants candidate B. And now you hire candidate A, and that group's already against that candidate because they wanted the candidate B. But what we do offer, or we do hope that the district does, is some type of an open house or an opportunity for people to come and meet the person. So frequently, when we look at those interview schedules, there's a slot of time right there, kind of at the end of the school day, you know, people are getting off work, where people can come and meet the candidate. And it's really informal. The candidate takes about five minutes in the beginning, says, here's who I am, here's my interest in Baldwin City. And then it's really informal, just a meet and greet. We've had some districts, you know, because the board wants as much feedback as possible on these candidates, just give folks a note card when they walk in and say, hey, we'd really like your thoughts around this candidate, pros that you see or questions that you have. And they just throw them in a basket on the way out, and now you've got a nice little stack of feedback from people that have met the candidate. So that's a way to do that. So Chris, I see you have your hand up up there.
Yeah, yeah. So first of all, I appreciate this timeline, you know, hearing that we may be looking at across the state, a third of superintendents rolling over to new positions. I think we do need to be active as quickly as possible to make sure we get the candidates that we can get here. My only caution here is that, you know, and you mentioned this earlier, Brian, as well, that we had intended to have this conversation on Monday. This timeline of, you know, announcements and getting the marketing materials out is currently set up for that Monday start date. I wonder if it might be better for us to consider, like a week from today, for instance, in order to get those marketing materials, in particular, those pictures we want to have, what information we want to share with these candidates about our community, really find tune in and not rush that part of it? I don't know that that costs us that much if we push it back four or five days, but...
Yeah. Those are all great points. Another couple of things to chew on here a little bit is you guys are in the first wave of searches that are going on. I think we have five, maybe six, that are formally open at this point in time. And if you kicked off, let's say, next week on Thursday, you would be in that first wave of candidates. There really isn't openings in your, kind of the east central part of the state. The openings that we have are out in north central Kansas and in western Kansas right now. So that should give you a little peace of mind that, hey, we're in a good spot timewise, timeline-wise. You guys are also, I'm not just saying this, and you probably, well, he probably says this to everybody, but your location is prime. I mean, people want to be near Kansas City, near Lawrence, easy drive to Topeka, easy drive to Ottawa. That's going to be a big pull for you guys. I've looked at what you pay for a salary already. You guys are very competitive in your salary. And I know Mr. Dorothy's been there many years, but you're probably going to land somewhere in a ballpark around that, most likely with what you're going to end up paying. So those are all factors that are going to really attract people. And as soon as this thing gets posted, people are going to start doing their homework on you, and so they're going to be going to your website. They're going to be looking at those things. You're going to generate a lot of interest. I just know that from having done this about 10 years. And where you're located and the size of district you are, you're going to have a lot of people looking at your job. So the timeline here, we could tweak that a little bit, and if we could even slide the interviews back to after the first of the year, if you wanted to do that. It's up to you guys. It really depends on how it works with your schedules. Like I said, these dates I have available. Let's talk a little bit about that, I guess.
Yeah. And to that point, I like the tail end of this timeline. I think it's perfect. We're resolving this by Christmas in this case here, where we can have, you know, this subsequent months to kind of work on that transition plan in there. But I do, and kind of mentioned this earlier too, about our strategic plan and our key sub goals as well. There's a lot of things that are happening like as we speak here too, and I don't want to muddle things up for our community to say like, here's a survey on strategic planning, here's a survey on superintendent search. So I think we have to be somewhat strategic in how we sequentially roll these things out. And I don't know what those other timelines are specifically at this point, but I would like the rest of the board to kind of share their thoughts on timeline-wise. Am I just being overly cautious about getting the marketing materials out? Or do we want to kind of structure these, all these things we're trying to do in a separate way or just merge them all together kind of thing?
Andy, Susan, Tony?
I don't have a firm opinion on what you're discussing right now, Chris. I just wanted to say something in this public meeting. What we're looking at is, I also love the end of this timeline. What we're looking at is either trying to get this process complete as soon as possible or there's no splitting between, there's no splitting the process with the election and possible new members in the middle. So then you end up waiting, and that, to me, is totally unacceptable, given how many openings we think there may be in the state. So I do think this overall timeline is really appropriate, and Brian, I appreciate you getting it kind of skewed in that direction for us.
Okay.
I'll try and... Yeah. I tend to agree with both Chris and Andy about the ending of the timeline. I like that. I tend to be on the side of deferring to Brian about how quickly we can put these materials together, because I do think that getting them out sometime, obviously next week, will put us in the best position. And so the first does look a little bit ambitious, but if we waited a few days to make sure that everything was put together. I mean, I don't see a huge difference between Monday and, say, Thursday in putting the initial announcement out and getting those materials out there. But I do agree that what we want to do is move on this so that we can get the best candidates, because there's going to be, everybody I mentioned this to shakes their head and says, good luck, you know, don't try to find a superintendent, because there's going to be a lot of jobs out there. And so we need to hop on.
Yeah. Just a couple of other pieces to think about. On the posting it on the first, we have posted and then got the marketing materials out a couple of days after that. It's not a huge deal. The critical thing for our team here is kind of getting this timeline hammered out, because that really dictates the opening of the window, the closing of the window, and then the marketing material can come out, you know, a day or two after that. That's not as critical. Like I said, people know Baldwin City, and they're going to start doing their research. The marketing material is a nice way to sell your district. They're going to start researching as soon as it goes open. So then the marketing material's kind of icing on the cake on top of that.
So what do you need for the marketing materials? Is that something you said you would work with the board clerk on?
Yep. So Pam Schwartz in our office is the person, she reaches out to the clerk, and like I said, she kind of has a list of things that she needs. After we get off of this call, if we can hammer down a couple of these dates in this timeline, I'll go meet with Pam, and we plug it into our calendar. We build the application in the online side. We get the survey built, and then we'll send you the link to the survey, and you can launch the survey today probably or tomorrow if you choose to do that. Really, it's a standard survey that's used in all of the searches. We just branded it as Baldwin and then pushed that back out. Survey Monkey, everybody's familiar with that. So.
Yeah. Okay. Well, guys, so three things. Do we, are we all comfortable with proceeding for, because I don't want to make an assumption. I know how I feel, but I want to make sure everybody has a chance. Are we comfortable with just moving forward with KASB? Or is there an appetite among any of the other board members to look at a different hiring entity? So let's decide that first, and then we can, once we're on the record officially about that, then we can decide on posting and posting date versus marketing date, et cetera, so they can get going, if that's our decision. Chris, are you okay with KASB?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Andy?
I was going to say, I don't imagine there'll be any dissent, but I can vouch for their services. The last time I did this, it got very complicated, and I was very glad we had KASB in our corner helping us out.
Cool. Tony?
Sure. Yeah, I think the I think this is the best entity to go with by far.
Okay, Susan?
Yep, 100% in.
Okay, I agree. So we we're unanimous on that. I I think we should post on November the first. And if there's a little bit of a lag between the marketing dates, I'm comfortable with that. What what say you, board members?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I was I was going to say that it, you know, I didn't know who was the one who really came up with all the marketing materials. But if Brian feels like this, you know, they can put it out whenever they can put it out.
It it takes him a few days to pull it because it's it's just back and forth between Pam and the clerk. And getting that material. And it's 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 information that your clerk has readily available, some budgetary enrollment figures, things like that. You guys may think, might start thinking about what are a couple of highlights or key things that we want to share? And then pictures of of facilities. And like I said, it's really, the candidates are going to research the heck out of you through the KSD website, through your local website. So it's just nice icing on the cake to kind of sell sell your district. So I will have, I will put on here between today and next week at this time to get the marketing materials spun up.
I'm comfortable with that.
So that would be the fourth of November. And then I'll work on getting that online survey. I can have that link to you guys probably here by the end of the day.
Awesome.
And so I'll just put that on here. And then.
Along with some, can you also give us some suggestions for how you get to the masses of people?
Yeah, so use your Facebook pages, use any social media accounts that you have, hang it on your district website. Those are the three most common things. So.
I guess I was thinking a little bit in terms of making sure we also access thoughts and ideas from people who maybe don't have students in our schools, but also are invested in the community.
So that's a great question. To access, do you guys do any kind of a district highlight in a in a in a local paper, on the radio? Are those things that you've done in the past?
I mean, I think we could work with our chamber a little bit, too.
Chamber would be another great resource there. Every community has one or two of those people that are well connected. Just a simple phone call from one of the board members saying, hey, we just, we just put a link out on our website. Share it with anybody that you that you come across. Your chamber is a great resource for that as well. So, you know, city managers, those those folks that are, you know, city council members, those are folks you can just pick up the phone call and say, hey, we want your feedback. You might, you might push that out to anybody you cross paths with. Okay, then this next one, you guys need to pull your calendars out and look which of those three dates would work for, it'll be an evening meeting, most likely, the 15th, 22nd, or the the second for you guys, because that kind of also depends. What we choose for that is also going to impact the window for that survey to be open. Because I'll bring the report from the survey to that board meeting that night. So I need a couple of days before that board meeting to to build the report that I bring and meet with the board on one of those three dates, 11:15, the 22nd, or the 2nd.
Our regular meeting is on the 15th. So we're meeting then anyway.
Yeah.
Okay, let's plug that one in then. Does that work for you guys? It'll take me about 45 minutes to an hour that night. So it may make a little bit longer meeting than you typically have. But that that if that works for everybody, I'll plug that in.
Well, so let me throw an idea out there is do we, do we know? I mean, we always have lots of business to do on the 15th or on the regular meetings, right? And and we don't know what's going to be out there then. Trying to pile this on top of a regular meeting might be might be a bit of a challenge, right? I'm not opposed to having a meeting lengthened by 45 minutes if that's what it takes Brian to go through this process with us. But I also want to be sensitive to the fact of trying to do regular board stuff and and do this at the same time.
That's a good point.
Well, I'm going to advocate for myself a little bit. I've been at the school every night for two months and I'm I'm looking for less nights, not more. I don't, I I hear what you're saying, Tony. If that's a deal breaker, the 22nd is also a Monday. So we we could do that and it would still be, it looks like it would still fit, right? The 22nd is one of the dates on here.
And that actually would give you a little more time for the community feedback in the online side of things.
I'm okay with that, if that's what everybody wants to do.
Well, I agree. I agree, Kelly, and and with the rest of my board members here. Fewer meetings is better than more meetings. So I so I get it.
And and just a, just a, as you look down the schedule, when you get to that last, that last box down there, those are all board meetings. So there's, there's some extra meetings that you're going to have here. So the the meeting with me with the where we go through the candidates is a meeting. And then depending upon how many interviews you do, let's say you interview three, there's three meetings. And then a lot of times what boards will do is they'll sleep on it, come back the next, maybe morning or next night and do their deliberations. I've had some boards, though, that they they meet right after that last interview and do their deliberations. And it's kind of up to you guys how you want to handle it at that point. But yeah, so those are those those last two items on that, those are all, those are all meetings too. So it's a, it's a tedious process, but it's a, it's 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 worth spending the time and doing it the right way.
If we do shift to the 22nd, I'll have to call in. I'm out of town that evening. So if I'm the only one who feels that way, we can go that route, but.
Andy, you got cut off.
I just, I'd rather have Chris there in person for what it's worth.
Yep, yeah. So so if that's the case, I say let's stick with the 15.
Sorry to interrupt. The 22nd is right, is what, exactly two days before our fall break? So some people may already be out of town as well. I'm just speaking for Phil. I don't know.
Let's do the 15th. Let's do the 15th then.
And then does the 13th work for the candidate review or I go over all the candidates with you guys?
Are we talking about evening meetings or?
Yeah, it would be, it's up to you guys. I mean, I I do meetings at all times of the day. I've I've done morning meetings even. I've come and I don't, it's up to you guys.
Looks good on my end. After about three or so.
That meeting on that evening, I'll spend about an hour with you. Make sure that you're comfortable with with the information with the candidates that I've shared. And then you'll you'll probably want to spend a little bit of time that night finalizing your interview questions. I'll talk about the interview framework on the 15th. After we've settled the characteristics, then that that night on the 13th, we'll kind of finalize that interview framework. We'll do some, I'll do some coaching, teaching, whatever you want to call it, on just some interview reminders. And then then you guys will decide who you want to call for your for your interviews. So that my part's about an hour, hour and 15 minutes total that night. You're probably going to spend about another 30 minutes, maybe deliberating and calling those candidates on that night. That's a little bit longer meeting. Okay? 12:13 then? And then the last item there, that's just a.
Sorry to interrupt, Brian. I have to disappear for a moment. Somebody just got to the house. I'll be back as soon as I can.
Okay, that last window there, or the last is a window of time for interviews. As I tell boards, it's always easier to schedule too many of those and then then free up one night than it is to try to say, we're only going to do three and you decide you want to do four interviews trying to find that fourth interview. You know, a district your size, the candidate pool that you're probably going to amass, I'm going to say three to four candidates is very likely of what you'll want to do. Five, I would probably push you a little bit to squeeze it a little bit more. There's typically a line in your pools. These are people are really good fit, then there's some that are, and then there's some that absolutely no way. And so I would probably suggest or recommend scheduling four interview nights within that timeline or timeframe that's there. But you can schedule a fifth one if you choose to. Or less.
I'm I'm not going to be able to do all nights unless I call in. So and if daytimes are an option, we can look at that, too. But I'm not going to be able to do four nights in a row at nights.
Yeah. So the 15th is a Wednesday, 16th Thursday, 17th Friday. Friday sometimes is a no deal because we're into basketball and wrestling and all of those things. 20th, 20th, obviously, then is the Monday.
Kelly, does it help with your schedule if we're talking about like four o'clock versus seven?
Yeah. Yeah, it depends on the day. I mean, my my workday basically starts at three. So I mean, I can work around that. I just can't do it multiple days in a row.
So I may be the most flexible of of any of the people that are that are in the room right now. Because by that time, my semester activities are over. So I can be available anytime during any of those days. I have no commitments whatsoever.
I want your life, Tony. I want your life.
Yeah, well, yeah, but the week before that's my final grades, right? Yeah.
So well-earned break in there, but yeah. So like, Tony, my 15 through 22nd is pretty, is pretty.
I'm just trying to say I'm I'm available. You guys can decide this and I can show up.
Is is like three o'clock doable, like right after school versus evening, evening, or day, day? And does it all have to be the same?
I mean, you want to give the candidate the same experiences, but you could interview them and then do the open house after the interview. That would be an easy flip. So let's, typical day for a candidate looks like they'll get to the district, I'm going to say probably mid morning. They're going to meet the district office staff, they're going to get a tour of the the facilities, take a tour of the community. Then you want to give them a little bit of time also. They'll they'll obviously eat lunch in there. A lot of times they eat lunch with the admin team, your principals or any district administration that you have. Then give them a little bit of a breather and then you'd go to your 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 reception, your open house, whatever you want to call it. And then you do your interviews. You could easily flip the interview and that open house piece. And it would, you could accomplish the same things for the candidate. So you could easily do a three o'clock to five interview. And then the reception, open house starts at 5:30 for the candidate. And then flipping that around, 5:30 is the interview on the typical schedule, the other schedule. Their open house starts, let's say, at four o'clock to to five o'clock.
And so, Brian, are you suggesting two hour blocks for all these interviews?
I would say you need to give yourself at least two hours for that interview. In a two hour interview, you can typically work through about anywhere from 15 to 20 questions. Those questions are going to be very specific and targeted back to those characteristics that we define up there on the 15th of November. And so, yeah, you can figure about two hours is is typical. After two hours, you guys are tired, they're tired, and it's it's not really very productive. So.
I'm available three o'clock all of those days. Friday would be pushing it at three o'clock, but.
I would, I'm going to interject here also, I would probably recommend staying off the Friday, just because I know your candidates are all working in schools, Fridays in schools are always loaded with activities and things. And so, and you guys probably have things you want to do on a Friday evening as well. So so can I suggest maybe the 15th, 16th, and then jump into the Monday and Tuesday of the next week? Does that work for folks?
I think so. We've got a board meeting on the 20th at 6:30. So I think that timeline works out to do the 16th, 17th, and 20th and 21st, if we just want to have a long haul school board type of Monday on the 20th.
Okay. Like I said, if if you go through the process on the 13th and you you decide, I'm really seeing three that are a good fit. It's always easy to drop one of those off and and then go from there. Okay. So kind of the next steps, I'm going to work.
I'm sorry, 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 sorry. One more thing. Are we scheduling on the 21st then, too? Is that what we're doing?
I'm seeing some heads shake, yes.
Yes, yes.
Lock that one off if we can.
So the 15th, 16th, 20th, and 21st, right? Okay, if we have four.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so next steps then for me, I'm going to meet, I'm going to go down and meet with Pam. And she'll reach out to Megan. I'm assuming Megan, you want her, are you going to delegate that to somebody else for the?
I mean, if I had the option to delegate, I would feel awesome about that. But no, it would, me is fine.
I'll have, I'll have her reach out to you. The other, the other big thing that that we need to jump on quickly is that day of the 15th, where I come to the community and meet with focus groups. We need to kind of get that schedule built. I need about an hour with each one. It takes me about 40 minutes, 45 minutes, but then if if we give, if you give me an hour, then if it goes long, there's a little bit of flex in there. But typical groups that I meet with are, I'll meet with a teaching, a teacher representative group. I'll meet with a like a classified staff representative group. I'll meet with a a business representative group. A lot of times it's a chamber of commerce group. I can meet with up to about 30 people. After that, it gets kind of hard to to facilitate an honest conversation and give people a chance to feel like they have a voice in the process. A lot of times I'll meet with a psych council or a PTO or a booster club. Those would all be examples of groups that that I frequently meet with in those processes. You guys get to decide who you want me to meet with. I can typically get through seven of those in a in a day fairly easily and still be ready to go for the board meeting if I have a have a gap of about an hour between the last group and the board meeting that evening. So we don't have to decide all those groups today. A real simple way to do that is maybe just email Megan your choices and then I can work with her to build what that schedule looks like.
Yeah, I like that approach. And as you're listing up that, those groups of stakeholders, we we do participate in a special education cooperative as well. Do we, do we include those administrators maybe in those interview? Not 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 in this stakeholder feedback necessarily, but in the actual interviews, like for the, like you mentioned, like the lunch getting together with the administrative team? Or how does it usually unfold?
Are you guys the, are you the host for the the cooperative?
Sorry, it's interlocal, so it's even more independent than that. But I do want to give them an opportunity to kind of meet each of the candidates.
Yeah, you could have them on the day the candidates come to town. You could have them meet with the district admin while they do a lunch. Yeah, that that'd be a great way to do that.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Yep. So another, another way to to figure out your characteristic committees, not to keep belaboring that point. A lot of times we'll have a board, just they'll they'll do a personal invite to two or three people of their choice. And that becomes a board representative group for one of those focus groups. It's really up to you guys. I I you wouldn't believe some of the groups that I've met with. So student group is also an interesting one to meet with. A lot of times I'll meet with a a student council or I'll meet with the class presidents or class officers from a high school. They have some interesting perspectives as well. So just email Megan and then Megan, you and I can be in touch on that schedule and what that looks like. I live, I live in Barreton, which is east side of Topeka, so I can beat a Baldwin in 40, 45 minutes pretty easily. So we can start fairly early in the day, too, if you want to. So, okay?
Awesome.
Questions for me before we jump off? Okay, the only thing, the only thing I need also from you guys is that contract. And like I said, if you want to wait and ratify that at your next board meeting, that's fine. You don't have to do it today. Yeah, we're going to get this thing launched and be rolling. So if if you guys have any questions for me, just call KSB and they forward, they forward it to my cell phone. So you can get ahold of me easily that way. Actually, I'd give you my cell phone, but we're we're streaming publicly, so I don't want to throw that out there to everybody.
I can share that with them.
And Megan, I gave it to you, didn't I, in an email?
I think, yes.
It's at the, actually, I think it's at the bottom of my email in the signature line, too. So, okay, any final questions for me?
Nope. Thank you very much, though. We're glad to get started.
All right. Well, I am looking forward to this process and and don't hesitate to reach out if you have any questions. That's why we're here, to help work, work the process with you all.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Have a good rest of the week.
All right. Thanks, everybody. Motion to adjourn?
Do you want to approve the contract this time or do you want to wait till next meeting?
We can. We just won't be able to actually sign it, but I don't think there's anything wrong with doing that if we want to go ahead.
Kelly, the contract only asks for your signature and mine.
Oh, okay. So yeah, if we want to go ahead and do that. Oh, okay. So yeah, if we want to go ahead and do that, then I'll make sure and get in and sign it, guys.
Okay, well, then I move that we approve the superintendent search agreement with KASB.
A second.
Chris has moved and Tony has seconded to move forward with the process of hiring KSB for our superintendent search process. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Okay, it's unanimous. All right, motion carries. 1, 2, 3, 5, 0, sorry. Perfect. I will get into the office and sign that. We're supposed to follow up with Megan about ideas for groups we would like Brian to speak with. So remember that. I know there's a lot of things to keep track of. We also got our survey link for our strategic plan homework stuff, too. So a lot of irons in the fire. Appreciate all you guys do. Motion for adjournment then.
I move we adjourn.
All right, Chris moved and Tony seconded. We, for us to adjourn, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Thanks, guys. Meeting adjourned, 1:23.
Thank you.